Next item, please.
Special report, hiring process, Ms. Mason, Ali Basri.
So this is a continuation of last month and we've talked and, you know, trying to look at the process and I know we have co-chair, Ms. Farage, and then we have, I think, the committee members here that I think are going to come up as well.
Good evening. Executive Director Fatimi Farage is actually a co-chair and she'll be taking the lead. I'll introduce her.
Good evening, everyone. We have great members of the committee for the hiring process with us tonight. We're going to present on how we handle the committee, what we have in place, what recommendations we have, and then Dr. Maleko will make a recommendation. As always, as you heard from the book review process, we're always listening to feedback and enhancing our practices. So, thank you for that feedback. Committee members, as you can see, it's diverse. We have co-chairing the committee was Ms. Ali Basri and myself. We have Principal Abdelbaki from Stout, from Middle School. We have Principal Hassan High School. We have DFT President Jane Maza. We have Special Ad Coordinator Courtney Platsky, Josh Tyne, the ADSA President, and Michael Wager, AP at Dearborn High, and also representation from hires from outside of the district. Thank you for serving on the committee. So what we currently have in place is the committee that goes through three rounds. We have the first round when we do the application review. This is the screening of the applications. This goes through screening by the executive directors, HR director, director of EL and compensatory ad, and also student services directors. Those with admin experience are selected. Those who fit the perfect profile, who of the principal that we're seeking or the central office staff that we're seeking, we select them. We go through their applications and we select about eight to 15 depending on how many applicants we have for that specific position. And then through round one, we have administrative interview committee. We have directors and ADSA members. Typically, the ADSA president will send an email and seek candidates for that specific interview. The top ranking candidates will progress to the next round. The second round, which is the next round, will go through parents or community members, community if it's a central office position not specific to a certain school, parents if it's an administrative interview. We have the staff committee, participants provided by union president again, student committee only if it's a high school position, assistant principal or principal. And then the final round will be the superintendent and executive director of that specific feeder trap, and the principal is involved if it's for an AP position for that specific school. I'm going to hand it to Courtney.
So as we were reviewing our process and looking at any changes or ways that we can tighten it up, there were a few things that we found that we would like to make some adjustments to that would really apply to any of the options that we're going to go through today. So one of those is that when things are being reviewed, when applicants are being reviewed prior to the interview process, that the screening committee is going to have a spreadsheet where they can add any other thoughts regarding the candidates as they're reviewing the applications. So they can put what their reasons are as to why they are recommending the candidate moves forward to an interview, or why they don't find that the candidate is qualified for an interview at that time. We'd also like to increase our consideration for qualified external candidates to ensure that we're getting a wide pool of candidates for our positions. And then as we move into the interview process, we are looking at considering using a digital form for voting so that we could open it right before the voting and then close it right after the voting after each interview or after each interview round. We like to continue giving all the executive directors and directors the opportunity to participate on the administrative committee and ADSA to providing member names for engaging in that committee as well. Some other things we'd like to look at changing with any of these options is that the interview committee members could choose to excuse themselves rather than engage in any post-interview committee discussion, so they can make that choice. We would like to make sure that we are getting a wide variety of participants from the parents and the community members, so we would solicit them through the school blogs by submitting information on the school blogs for any particular building or position that we're looking for and seeking participants through that. That would really be a much more timely way for us to get participants from the community. It would give us more participants and a more diverse group of participants as well. We have already moved forward with removing any names from the rating streets, rating sheets to protect anonymity, so now they just state whether they're from a school or if they're a parent or a staff member, but we keep those anonymous. We would also like to make sure that participants are limited to two times engaging on these interview committees unless we have no other volunteer participants, of course. But we do feel that the directors should be exempt from that guideline so they could continue to participate in the interview process. Another option for submitting their ranking sheets would be a Dropbox or a folder, so we've considered that as well. And of course, we're going to consider any ongoing feedback throughout the process and continue reviewing that as necessary, and that any individual concerns about interviewees would be discussed privately with the superintendent and human resources departments.
Hi. So really, just on option one, we just wanted to say, we think it's a good plan and with the recommended changes to tighten up the process. Just so you know, for the staff that I invite, I always try to put it out to the building reps in every building. That's part of our union. Each union, each building has a building rep. So I usually ask them, if it's an elementary, I ask them to get someone from lower L, upper L, a special ed if possible, and also a special area like music art PE. If it's a secondary, I try to get someone from every department if possible, and again, someone from the electives, and again, someone special ed. Now, obviously, it's people volunteering and sometimes, you know, their schedules don't permit to get that wide of a range, but I put it out to the building reps. I let them solicit because they know their staff and who would be more interested than, it's quicker. So, but it's been a good process so far.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Maleko. The second option is similar to the first, but there is a major revision. The second option is the candidates still interview with the administrators from central office and ADSA members. And then the second round consists of having the staff, community members, and the parents and community members and the staff together in the same round. So it does eliminate one extra round. If it's a high school position, the students would also join that round. And then those can't, the finalists would interview with Dr. Maleko and the executives and the principals if it's an AP position.
Good evening. The third option is much shorter and more concise, but it limits a group of people. It would be just the directors and ADSA interview and make recommendations for the superintendent, and then the second round would be directly to the superintendent. It would include the recommendation changes that you saw in slides four and five. As far as ADSA goes, similar to what Jane had stated, we try to randomize the members and we assign based on needs. So if it's a central office position, we ask for elementary, middle school, and secondary administrators to volunteer. If it's geared towards elementary-specific, we go with elementary and then middle and secondary or a high school the same way. If there's multiple volunteers, we limit it to three or four, and then we randomize those volunteers, basically, not technically picked from a hat, but basically picked from a hat. So it's more randomized to give everyone a fair selection for the members. But a lot of it is based upon what the need is for that position and who would be best qualified to interview those people.
I do have a question from a trustee. Did you want to take questions now or?
Sure. Just was changing the slide. Comments, questions, suggestions.
And I know, Mr. Wager, at some point you want to make a comment too, isn't that correct?
Yes, correct. But we can take questions firstly.
And then I can give a recommendation.
So I was just wondering, in terms of, so you presented us with three options. I'm just wondering, what is the difference in timeframe between option number one, two, and three, from beginning to end?
The first two options require just about the same amount of time. The major difference in the first two options is that the second committee with parents and staff, that that's combined.
And remind me again, what's the timeframe for that?
So that would be the first round would be, well, the first screen, application screening process, and then there's the first committee, which is the ADSA members and the directors, the administrative interview. They screen all the candidates. They interview all the candidates that were selected for an interview. And then the highest ranking candidates move to the second round and meet with or interview with one more committee, which is the staff and the parent committee combined in one room. And if it's high school, it would include students as well. And then they would make recommendations to the final round with the superintendent.
So I guess if you, once the position is posted...
What's a total timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
It's okay.
So we do our best to post positions for at least three weeks.
Okay.
Typically, it's about three weeks. That's our ideal. So we post for three weeks, and then once we start the first, we need about a month to get through all three stages. So as soon as, oftentimes, we'll do the first round and the second round in the same week if possible. And then depending on Dr. Maleko's schedule is how soon we can get the final round scheduled prior to the next board meeting. So we always work with board meeting dates in mind because we don't want to delay that person starting or, you know, now it's August, we did our, we always do our best to get everyone situated before the school year starts.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just add to that? So you know, too, one thing, though, we don't rush. So for example, when it gets to me, and we talked about this in the general ministers meeting when it comes to teachers and others, it's so very important to make those additional calls. I make a lot of them myself, but we also have Mari and HR who does a great job. I get the reports on all the calls, and then I'll make some myself to make sure we're ready for recommendations. So that's why there's a chance that, okay, we might project it at a certain board meeting, but if we're not ready for it because we still need more information on the candidates, then it may go to the subsequent board meeting, just so we don't rush it. And that is my instinct, working in HR and making sure that you're taking your time because you're investing in candidates that are going to be with their students or supporting our students in some way or another.
Thank you.
Trustee Petshakov.
If you're going to do either one or two with the, excuse me, with the parent involvement and you're going to use a school blog, are you going to make it clear on the school blog what their time allotment would be and the fact that they are not necessarily going to be making a decision, but rather a recommendation that may, so that we clear all that up before they commit to participating?
Those are excellent suggestions. So this last time, which I included in one of the memos with Dearborn High, so we started like we traditionally do. We got listed 10 parents. We called them three weeks in advance trying to get ahead of the game, and then none of them were able to commit. Then we posted it on the blog, and we included the timeframe that they needed to be there, the number of parents that we were hoping to secure. So then that way, we, once we had so many commitments, then we would say, okay, we have enough parents. Thank you. What we did not include was the disclaimer that you're part of a committee and that you're contributing feedback to a process and that the superintendent makes a final decision, which is what it says on the disclaimer of the sheet.
Once they get there.
Once they're on the committee, it says that, but that would be a great thing to include on the blog message. So thank you.
It may change who wants to commit the time.
Absolutely. The time. Yep.
And I'll just say too, like, I'm very open-minded to, you know, improvements. I think those tightening ideas that you guys came up with are very important. I think it's good that it's going to help with the process. I guess if I had to make a recommendation, and we talked about it, was I would probably go with number two to change it up a little. You still have some stakeholder feedback. It will mean that less people will be on the committee, but it would be something we could try and we're still tightening it. Now, if the board felt strongly in one of the others, like option three, I'm not opposed to that.
I didn't see Ouija board in any of it.
Yeah, no, we didn't put that in there. But that would be a way to maybe, you know, we want to listen to what you all think and open to your ideas too. So if there's other things that we can do to tighten it, I know the committee's open to it. I think this is going to be ongoing too, so the committee can stay together. So if we need other things down the line that we discover, you know, we're open to the feedback and open to improvements. So I mean, I would say, okay, let's go with number two, but I don't feel strongly. If the board felt strongly on one of the other options, I'm open to that. I've been, obviously, you know, I think, Mason, we could probably do the numbers, but probably over 90 administrators I've hired, superintendent in this district. And then if you add the HR, it's been a lot, you know, a large number, or in new positions. So I've seen the things we've done, and we talked about it last board meeting, how we went from, you know, just a few administrators doing it years ago when Dr. Artis was here, to then all of a sudden we moved, when Brian Winston came, to more stakeholder feedback. For me, I do find it valuable, the stakeholder feedback. The first thing I get from the committees, just so, and all the participants know, is I get the rankings. So I get the rankings to see where they fit, to see if it was a good fit with parents or students. So I take that very seriously. The next thing I get is I get a stack, and we've got a lot of AP candidates here, a stack of sheets of all the ratings that everyone knows, that I read them all. They come to me. I don't have the names of who the committee members were, but I do know, like, we do say they got to say staff, or they got to say they're from this school, but I don't know the specific individual. Unless the specific individual wanted to put their name, they're welcome to, I'm not going to prevent it. Sometimes they want me to know that this person is writing this to the superintendent, but I take that very seriously. And I have tell you that the committee rankings over time have, you know, swayed some of the decisions. When it gets to me in the last round, it's a conversational piece, and I think the last round is very important, but they've already gone through such a rigorous process that I am now asking different questions to make sure they're not only a good fit for the district, but possibly for the school. And I don't know, Mr. Wager, maybe this is a good time for you to come up and...
I should say it's a perfect second.
Because you came in, we recruited you from outside the district and...
Yes. Good evening, everyone. That was exactly what I wanted to come up and share, and that's why I got involved with this committee, is being that I am somebody who has recently come as an external hire into the district for an administrative position. But it wasn't the first time that I have applied and gone through the process here with Dearborn Public Schools. I mean, this is my hometown. This is where I grew up. So there were several times that I had made applications to previous positions. And I will say, as an external candidate, one of the things that I always appreciated every time I interviewed in Dearborn was there was a consistency. There was no surprises. It was a very set way of doing things, and you knew that it was going to come out with a process that was pretty fair to both internal and external candidates. I will say there were little things that I appreciated as well, like when you're interviewing for a high school position, that it has student voice involved, because I think that's essential when you're getting to that level. But it just was that consistency every time that made it very comfortable, made it a very easy process to get involved with, and I just wanted to share that from my perspective as an external candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wager. And if I could just add too, that we want to make it a comfortable process to the volunteers, everyone who's volunteering. And so we don't want to make anyone feel pressured or anything like that, which is why I think we're tightening some things. And then if we did, if we did combine the staff and the parent committee, you know, if staff or parents want to have discussion, that would be up to them. If they want to go, that's fine. Or staff may say, look, the teachers may want to get together in a separate room. So that would be allowed after, if they wanted to. It would mean that there's less people on the committee, like, so you'd probably be cutting the number of staff that are on the committee in half versus, and that would kind of limit it a little, but you'd still have some feedback back as to, you know, from the stakeholders, basically.
Trustee Bear?
Yes. When option number three was being presented, it sounded like it was a negative option, like it was not a good option. Can you please elaborate on that, please? Like, if I was leaning that way, talk me out of it type thing.
I didn't feel it was a negative option. I was just saying...
I'm saying my feeling was, I thought...
It's a faster option. It's more succinct, but it does, what I was saying was, it does eliminate, kind of like Dr. Maleko was saying, as far as making it a smaller, each thing we choose, it eliminates some people no matter what we choose. So the third one would be a faster process and would save our parents and our staff through time, but it wouldn't take their voice into account. And so if you eliminate that, you do eliminate their voice, but it does speed up the process at the same time. So depending on what you're looking for, it's a plus and it's a minus.
True. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Dr. Maleko, I guess if this process ends up hiring like tonight in assistant principals, assistant principals, who ends up evaluating those positions?
The assistant principals?
Yes.
It's the principals.
Principals.
And the superintendent evaluates the principals, I guess. Where do... Actually, no, I don't. I evaluate the executive directors.
Okay.
The executive cabinet then evaluates the...
So we're saying we welcome parent, community input, but at the same time, we're going to put a disclaimer out to saying, you're just providing input. We're making the final decision. So, and nowhere in part of the evaluation process is there parent or community input. So, and we know, yes, there's a lot of hires the last six, seven years, great hires, but most of the issues that come up in the community and at this level, at this board level, is when parents think that they picked the right person and we completely go the other way. So that's where, I mean, I ask for this, to look into this process. I appreciate all the work that's being done. I mean, it's very valuable. Eventually, we're going to make a decision. This is the process that we're all going to support moving forward. But you and I have talked about, my colleagues and I have talked about, many different situations which cause a little stress on the board and in the community. How do we avoid that? You know, eventually, those positions have to answer to directors and yourself. I think there should be a little bit more, the process should involve that level people, you know, when you're doing, when you're going through the process.
So option three? And I'm open-minded.
Yeah, no, it looks like maybe, maybe a hybrid between two and three. And, I mean, you know me, I'm always supporting parent involvement and, you know, community involvement.
Sure.
But, you know, with all, with all due respect to parents, what do they know what a director's responsibilities are, or a cabinet member, or HR director, you know, and you put them in there and it becomes sort of kind of a popularity, you know, and how well do we enjoy it. And plus, the parents that do get involved, it's usually the same parents. And they always, they don't always show up, and I know we're trying to do better in that department, but just, I would like to see it closed up where there's more involvement with, you know, the directors and the ADSA. I mean, do we want to completely get away from option number two, which is, if that's what ends up, that's fine with me, but...
And you mentioned hybrid. What would that...
I mean, depending on the position, like was mentioned earlier, maybe staff should be involved, depending on what, depending on what the position is.
Okay.
But again, you know, should there be a staff committee when, you know, you're looking to hire somebody who's going to directly answer to you, AKA a director?
Okay.
I don't know what that would look like. I'm just presenting. Like I said, whatever we decide, we will forward.
Appreciate the feedback. And again, we're going to keep this together so we still, we don't have to have a final decision tonight. It's still to get important feedback.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Basri?
Yeah. I asked last time to ask the college, as they went through the same process, was that feedback solicited or asked for their feedback from every fourth college team?
We did not, but I can still get it.
Okay. Because I believe that they did some work, I think, with, what was her name? I could forget.
Lori Gonco.
No. Crystal, was it?
Crystal.
Is the president still here?
Yeah, I believe so.
Was it Crystal who did the revision and look at the hiring process and gave us a report as well?
Good afternoon, trustees. Trustee Moser, say that again.
The report that we received...
The most recent one we just had?
Yeah, where she came and talked about the switch of the software and then also talked about the process of how do we talk to candidates, how do we embrace them with the system, get them ready for interviews as well. I think you remember that individual. I forgot her name. I always, I think it was Crystal, but I could be wrong.
It's Tracy Davis.
Tracy. Thank you very much. There you go.
Assistant Director. I apologize. Trustee Moser, I was focusing on this board's analysis of administrative leadership positions for the district. And the presentation you're describing for the college is related to every hire from the entire college, and Ms. Davis has specifically devised a strategy that you heard a presentation on that is broader than what I believe the district is describing here. I don't know if that impacts your question, but I hope I answered it.
I think what she had brought forward with all of the things that she presented to the college, and hopefully you're implementing those at that institution, are going to be very valuable for our community to learn from.
Well, I can tell you that I'm more than happy to, and it may have already happened. I don't want to speak for Ms. Davis or her supervisor, Dr. Gonco, but it may have already happened, and if it hasn't, I'll be sure to give Dr. Maleko the presentation and the information that you're remembering from our board.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, President Tevaluna. The other thing is, I know last time, we were presented with what other districts were doing. So looking at the presentation right now, what things we found successful in other districts that we're implementing in the new process?
That would be combining the two committees. That was one of the ideas that was taken from the other districts. Also, the third option, just having the executive directors, directors and ADSA do the interviews, the one committee then goes to the final superintendent interview. That was also what some of the districts did as well. Not many of them, though. So those were the two pieces we took from other districts to get ideas.
Yeah. I have a comment about, obviously, hiring is definitely sometimes, a lot of times, subjective. So currently in the corporate world, what I noticed tech companies usually do, they have interviews with folks who don't really deal with that department at all, and they just want to see how that person is fitting to the culture of that company. Now, I'm talking about company. We're talking about your school district, which I think are two different things, but it's, it's an interesting model to look into as well to recruit the best. And also, they also work on making sure that, anti-bias, that's what Tracy Davis at the college talked about all the time, of how they train their interviewers of removing their own bias when they determine, oh, this person would be fit for our position or not. And they give that recommendation as part of the whole committee. So hopefully we can look at the corporate world and learn from that. But that's also a feedback that I'd like to give the committee. Thank you.
Trustee Petshakov.
Okay, a couple of things. One, I'm not certain that you would be required because I, like I said, I leave this process up to you. That's what we hire you to do, and that's your job and your responsibility, and you pick the one that works best for you. That's my position on this. That being said, do we have to only lock in on one style of process? I do agree that there might be positions that you're looking for that don't require parent-student input. So why, I mean, there's no rule that states, as long as we're following all the legal parameters of hiring, that we don't need to say, we're only doing this method to or for every hire, or only, I don't see why we need to limit the ability to change up depending on the positions you're looking for, and at least experimenting with two different styles. It's almost like piloting different programs, number one. Number two, Trustee Moser, the process that was being discussed at the college, I'm not sure how well it would blend with what, it was more about hiring from a broad sector of the community who don't have specific requirements like we would require when we're looking for a public school position. I'm not certain how well...
I see.
Can I finish my statement, please, before you say something?
Yeah, please go ahead.
So while they can look at the report to maybe get some insight from it, they still have to have a process. This process is to hire somebody specific.
Right.
And they, and they have to come in with certain skill sets. And, and the thing that we had had a presentation on over at the college was a broad gamut, and it was more generalized as to how to more recruit from the community at large in a variety of job titles, not specific to just our educational system here. So I just want to take a cautionary tale for how, how much you can events out of that particular report from the college and use it, find it useful for the process you're trying to fit. and use it, find it useful for the process you're trying to fit into just calling out the people who've already applied, because we're talking about then changing the whole application process, basically. Not just the interview process.
We will review it as a committee.
Yeah.
I, I just want to make sure that what I'm saying is clear, so there is no confusion about it. What Ms. Davis presented is a way of making it fair for all applicants. We just recognize that we need to do better with external candidates, that we administrators are, and it's, it's not a wrong thing, we know the individuals who are in our district. So they do have an advantage, which actually is their right, because they've committed to this organization and they deserve that advantage. However, recognizing that fact, we need to, whenever we hire somebody and the superintendent, it's, I do agree with you, trustee Petlicov, that it's his position and it's his, on, on him to make that recommendation. And we would hope that this process would help him make the best decision to find the right person for this position. What she presented was ways of, of, of helping all candidates to be on the same par. I mean, if I can go at length of my personal experience where I discounted candidates, I served on interview committees for work where I discounted folks because of the way they dress. But does that discount from their skills and their qualifications? Perhaps not, not as a programmer. But I've evolved over, and actually, other folks who were on the same committee that we were interviewing that individual, called me out on it. And he was like, what does his dress code has to do with his job? He's, he's a brilliant programmer. So I'm just saying that I believe that report would be very helpful in the overall hiring process of how do we remove bias when we interview candidates, especially folks that we do know already? Because we want to make sure at the end of the day that the superintendent hires the best person for the job. And again, it's his decision, and I leave it at that, thank you.
Yes.
Well, I would just say that I would caution against eliminating stakeholders, especially our parents. I think that if we've been using this process for X amount of years, I think that we should give a lot of, or going forward, we should be mindful of what sort of parent participation we have. Because if that's something that we have asked the parents to become part of our community and be part of the process, and then we're going to say, well, we're no longer going to involve you in that, I think we're, we're trying to have the parents involved, but yet we're saying we can't get involved in this. So I, I'm hesitant to take that feedback and, and not give them that sort of opportunity to get involved in the schools. I definitely want to make sure we involve our students. So whether it is a hybrid of option number two, again, depending on the position, because I do agree there are some positions that, yes, we definitely would love to have parent feedback, and I think others are just probably not best suited to have that time spent there. So, something to think about going forward.
Dr. Maleko.
So I'm listening to all of you, and we'll look at the report. And, you know, because this is specific to administration, maybe there's some things that can benefit, you know, we've got teachers and non-instructural, so there's all sorts of other processes. I'm also listening to what trustee Barry said, trustee Petlicov, and maybe trustee Watts and others for like a hybrid. We could look at something, you know, maybe we do experiment a little bit with, with tweaking some things, like maybe our director and those kind of positions really don't need, you know, maybe we don't need the way, you know, who's going to, where are the parents directly with? They're with the principal and the assistant principal. So maybe we need to look at maybe having a little representation there. But then, when we get to these other positions that, like you were saying, trustee Barry, you know, maybe they're not, you know, the director of assessment. I mean, we know what assessment is, but they don't have the same level of understanding as Ms. Farage does or others that are, are here when we're hiring people. So maybe we can kind of look at some of that, where we maybe go to option three for some of those positions, and then still, we, you know, possibly a hybrid where we still, you know, have the, the president or others just to have representation. So I, I would just say that, I, I heard what you said, and maybe we can have the committee come back and look at some of these things, and it can be an ongoing thing that we are continuing to look to, to improve. I do think that the tightening, I appreciate, and I appreciate all the committee coming together in the summer and meeting. And I do think those tightening ideas, I, I think are valuable, so I think that's going to help regardless. But if that sounds okay to the board, maybe we'll, we'll move in that direction and experiment. I'm kind of listening, I'll have you guys debrief what you heard from the board and see if we can maybe, you know, with the different positions, maybe do something different, would that be something that would be?
Dr. Maleko, thank you, you're hearing exactly what I'm saying. So if it's an assistant principal position, yes, parents are involved. Most likely, it was a teacher in a building or a teacher in a school nearby, so they know the person, they know what they can do, what they can't do. And guess what? They're going to be working with the individual on a daily basis. By no means am I saying eliminate, you know, stakeholder feedback. But what does, what, as a parent, if I was a school board member, as a parent, what do I know about the responsibilities of your director? Who would know best? It would be yourself and the people you work with on a daily basis. I'm, I'm glad that you're, you're, you know, thank you.
And, and we can do it as a hybrid, so we still get some representation. Of course, we want to always include our union people. Thank you.
One thing that I just wanted to add, as far as the report from Tracy Davis, it was an excellent report, I would like you to take a look at it. Just general information was very well done. And it was also, but it was more on, at least I saw it on a lower level, not administrator, but, you know, across the board. But it also showed ways of making an applicant feel welcome, feel comfortable. Because I was in that position years ago when I was applying for a job. I was very qualified, and a lot of people have this, they just do not interview well, for whatever means. So this was a way, there was things written in that report to help them feel more comfortable, more at ease. And then you can get the best, you can know what kind of candidate they are, and you're not just looking at a very nervous person. So, thank you for agreeing to look at that, I think it would be helpful.
You, you just nailed it, President McDonald. In order for us to make candidates more welcome, especially outside candidates, because I hear over and over and over, I'm not going to apply for that position, I don't have a chance, this is the way outside candidates get treated. I don't think, I don't think I hear, Dr., Dr., that's your brother, trustee Moser saying that maybe we should look at that process and maybe duplicate it. But there are some things that we can pick up from it.
Absolutely.
I think you just kind of put it together that, yeah, we want people to feel comfortable. This is a great district, and people want to be part of this team. We want them to feel comfortable coming in for, beginning of that process, so thank you.
And when they're comfortable coming in, if we do hire them, they're comfortable being here, they feel like they're part of the family from the get-go.
And if they don't get hired, they can go out and market us saying, what a great district Dearborn is.
Absolutely.
Well, Mr. Weger has just testified to that.
Absolutely.
Couple of good people in here from outside, thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the, the work of the committee.
And if I could just say that now, since we kind of brought up the, thank you, President, you know, when it comes to teachers especially, because of the shortage and things, it is tougher to find candidates. So like, you know, when I was a principal at Salina and even Duvall, it would be, you know, if I had a vacancy, I would have, you know, eight to 10 good candidates, you know, that you're looking at. Now, you have one or two candidates that, like, five districts are looking for the same person, so it's, it's competitive. But that's also why, because the pool is not there, and we're trying to rebuild it. You keep hearing, grow your own, grow your own. And we're doing some of that here, some of that is the partnership with President Cavalluna and the college and under the board's, you know, support. But it is going to be something we have to continue to work on and promote our, I, I played a little inspirational message at the General Admin, you know, just a brief thing, and talked about different careers you can go in, teaching, teaching. We want our students to also consider going into education. So I think that's important, that we get people, you know, from Dearborn, and I think we have some of those, grow your own, and we can do more. But that may bring us into now looking at teaching committee, once we're able to solve the administration committee. So, appreciate everyone's feedback, and I'm open to any board feedback. Anytime, call me, or, you know, we can discuss it, but we will, if it's okay, President, we will just keep this committee going, and as we get feedback, we'll try some of these things and, and try to make sure that we get the best candidate for our students.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think that's the right.
Great discussion.